We move forward, if we move forward through the lens of safety. We know that that is a concern of our drivers. So as we're building routes, how do we get to that point of a bus? Being the safest bus and the safest route possible as we meet? The decision, if the decision is made to move to a unified start and end time. We also talked about the length of bus runs. So we have the ability to use the software that we have to put in parameters to help us build those bus runs that wouldn't be over an extended period of time. Whatever we decide, you know, if it's an hour and 10 minutes or an hour and 15 minutes, whatever our longest bus run is right now. If we're committed to this change, what is that parameter? And then we build our runs accordingly. I would, I would be remiss, I guess, too, if I didn't share that. There's a group of students that we often don't necessarily think about or talk about a lot because it's just what we do, right? We manage students and we get students to school every day and it's just what we do. But when we think about our special education students, for years, they have had an hour and a half bus run just because of where their locations are, right? We have to get them to those sites. So it's pretty typical for some of our most fragile students to be on a bus for an hour and a half. It's also very typical on those bus runs that PK through 12 ride together. They have for years and they do today. I know that our bus run that goes to Elmira, we have a first grader, you know, all the way up with nineteen year old. There are things that we do that we put in place to ensure that that's a safe experience or as safe as an experience as it can possibly be for those students that ride that bus. We are also very fortunate that as a district, we have monitors on every bus. Because when I spoke to these other districts about practices, that is one thing that they don't have and they wish they did, is the ability to have another adult on the bus to help and to assist with student needs as they arise. The other piece about driver recruitment, I am gonna lean on Micah and others to figure that one out with me because he's absolutely correct. It is definitely an issue and it's an issue that we don't own alone, right? We have to become more creative and this is a contractual year for the transportation unit. So I think we can get to some of that through the contract as he indicated. But that is a real problem that we will have whether we do this or not because of retirements and other things. So we're gonna have to do some work in that area regardless. But I think if the change is going to occur, the number one resource that we need is time to be able to have the conversations and to develop the routes, but also to involve our transportation staff who is the experts on student safety when it comes to transportation of students safely. So we need as much time as we can to be able to do that work. So. Be glad to answer any other questions that you might have or?
No, miss for the board right now, Reggie. Sorry. Scott, any? I mean, we have to have some dialogue here. So what are, what I mean? Yeah.
Always have a conversation about regionalization. So say that. Bad. Would, how would, how would switching to a single bus run? Advantage the other districts? That are, that are not coming in the other kids, they're not coming in that vehicle, a benefit or would that be?
I don't think we know, to be fair. I don't know that it would matter either way. Because if we were the regional site, they are going to meet us where we're at. And there would obviously also be, I gotta believe there would be scheduled changes and things like that. That would be a result of a regionalization as well. Yeah, I don't think we're close enough to that yet to say that this would be a benefit or not. Yeah.
Have, have we thought about? Potential request of that the enemy color street passed the state from late?
We did talk about that. And it appeared that it would be more of a no left turn. That would be something that they would consider, but it would be a request that we would make. Yeah.
I think the challenge with that is there's a, there's a driveway on the other side that's really close. I don't know how that would work. The more I kinda looked at that.
And our buses wouldn't be going out that way.
So it would be.
They'd be.
If, yeah, if that.
Mm hmm.
I'm interested in what our student rep thinks. I don't, I have no idea where color street is.
That's fair.
Okay, like, oh, Ripley's your own or that.
But do you think about the start time being different?
Um, I have to probably think about it more. It's kind of, I kind of think that like, if it did change, it would probably just cause my schedule, like personally, to shift and just like, I'd end up staying up later and then waking up later than usual. So I'm not a hundred percent sure. I haven't talked to many other students about that yet. But I think it could be good.
I think that's part of the research is that they say the younger students have trouble going to sleep at night. It's easier for you to stay up later, therefore then even if you do go to sleep, you get an extra. In this case, half an hour. That's where this whole thing started with all later start times. But then we kind of realized, okay, that's a nice benefit. But then just getting our two schools on the same schedule, so that kind of took, I think precedent over the other ones. So, so you would start classes at eight oh five instead of seven thirty five, so it's about a half an hour later.
I've always found it hard as a parent having multiple times that my kids went to school or were dismissed personally. You know, I, I never worked for a school district. I didn't have the ability that a lot of my friends did. Well, you know, my kid's just gonna come to my classroom. I didn't have that. I was, you know, my husband worked out of town and I had to leave work or whatever I had to do. But, um, you know, I, I, I think that change is incredibly hard. But when you say a district like Corning Painted Post can figure it out. You know, I feel like we need to, we need to look at everything. I also think that we've done a really good job at identifying where are those, where, where's the tough stuff? I mean, they're, they've been really good with communicating with us and I think we respect that. And it will take time, but we're saying big districts have figured this out. And in three or four years from now, we can't buy buses that can go pay more than one, one room a day. We have to be working towards something. So whatever is we, we don't do it until this time, that time, this work is not futile. It's, it's, we have to do this.
Sure.
I, my.
We, we try to look to the future best we can, two, three, five years. But if you look at the trend, there's nothing that's out there that I know of that's gonna stop this trend. It might play off, but I think it's gonna continue to go down. So should that do that, I mean, I mean, we'll be forced to by accounting to do this. If you look at trend. Looking to the future.
Maybe I think we have to look at it and like with basically when you said, point, I was really surprised that they're already doing it. We have to look at the whole big picture and really think it through thoroughly and ask the questions and listen to concerns.
Yeah.
Think for me, the, you know, I was a little skeptical that we could make the traffic patterns work on campus. Is doable, but from a legal perspective, we have to eventually address this because, I mean, I don't think the politics in the state have changed enough to where there's legislation out there to change that mandate. It's gonna happen. And so either this board is gonna look to do something now and address that, or just leave it for another board down the road. It's not really how I like to do things when we know something's coming, but right now, that's how it's looking. And then the emergency point of view, I know, you know, one of the things they always said was whenever someone gets interviewed after an emergency, it's always, well, I never thought something like this could happen here. You, you never know. You know, there's extreme weather events happening. Who knows? Not saying that's gonna happen here or not, but to me, yeah, it would be more reassuring to know that we have a plan in place. If we did, for some reason, have to get people out quickly, that we could do that and not cause mass confusion and chaos. That's just my feeling.
It happened to some of our community members. So it, it, it did. It wasn't just that school district. It happened.
But I really respect everything you guys have provided us and we wanna work with you on that. But I also know there is challenges. We have to, we have to have drivers. I mean, for one thing, we do have to do that, I think.
Well, and that's why I think the gift of time, if we are going to change, is the biggest benefit you can give to us. Because the work like starts tomorrow, right? If the decision is made, the work starts tomorrow. And there's a lot of work to be accomplished, but we wanna be thoughtful about it and we wanna have the time to make it the right decision, right? Like, we know that we're gonna move to unified, unified start and end times. Well, then the decisions that we're making about route development and about bus times and the communication with parents, right? We wanna be, we wanna have enough time to do that and do it well.
And I'm still not feeling a hundred percent confident we can be ready next school year. I just think there's a lot to do. I could be wrong on that. I still, in my head's like, wow, that's a lot, but I think we have to work towards it. I think we have to give the administration team direction that, yes, this, just from a legal point, I think we have to do it.
If any team can accomplish it, this team can do that. I will say that.
But we don't wanna rush it either. So that's why if it takes another year, then I think that's the best way to do it too. But.
I ran into a friend who was working for New York State Department of Labor now. And I thought it was interesting and she had worked with a couple of people. One had been let go or laid off from Corning Incorporated, thirty some year career. And a couple of, of people in similar situations. And she said to them, you know, you don't have to do the same thing anymore. What's something that you've always wanted to do? I mean, the, the one guy was like some kind of scientist. He said, you know, I've always wanted to drive a bus.
Send them our way.
Because there's money, there's money to, to help people do this. So I do think there, you know, I'd be willing to be part of a committee to kind of get creative and say, are we making all the right connections? Are we talking to, of course, New York and Department of Labor and anybody that's got funding or even our employment and training department? Where are those connections that we can make? And two different, it happened to be men in this case, went on and they funded, helped them get their CD on their bus drivers and they love it. After, you know, thirty some year career in, as scientist or whatever they were doing. So I thought that was a neat, kind of a neat story.
We have a couple of stories like that right now at the bus garage. We have a banker that's no longer a banker, my right? Right? Accountant of some sort, yeah. And did this while he was in between jobs and now it's his career. So, yeah, there, we just have to get people to realize that it is an opportunity. It's not a punishment to be a bus driver. So, yeah. Yes. But it's that marketing and that's being thoughtful and it's reaching out to some groups that we haven't probably tapped into yet, right? So, yeah.
And help me helping, helping give our own drivers, uh, platforms and help.
Yeah.
Josh would be on it. Just put Josh.
Yeah.
So I think we have a general consensus, but I know we're going to meet tomorrow with the bus garage. I'm looking forward to talking to the guys. Hopefully they get out alive. But.
We're bringing lunch.
No, but we really wanna engage you guys and figure out, because from a district perspective, there is a legal obligation we are gonna have that we're gonna have to figure it out at some point. So maybe we have that meeting, we can bring some feedback and just keep working towards it and discuss again next month. Does that sound like a reasonable solution right now?
So just so that I'm clear, so the intent though is to move the conversation forward with.
Yeah, I think you need to flesh out some things too.
Yeah. But getting to a unified start and end time. Okay. Okay. Hey.
That leads right into your report.
Yes. I don't know if I have anything else to say after that. So just a few updates. The Ram Mart is going extremely well. In fact, I had to send out an email to staff just a little while ago to kind of put in some new adjustments and parameters because it is going so well. So it's, the utilization is just incredible. In the first five days, we serviced twenty-three hundred individuals, which is just incredible. So we're really thankful for the partnership with the Southern Tier Food Bank. I just can't say enough about the partnership that's been established and we look forward to continuing that partnership for years to come. And speaking of partnerships, we also are moving forward with the Ram daycare. And so the Ram daycare will open up on or about January sixth. And that is a partnership with the YMCA. And so we're able to house a daycare center at room forty, right, at VW? And I believe onsite interviews are going to take place later this month, I think November twenty-third. So if you know anybody who's interested and wants to potentially work for the daycare, send them our way because it's open interviews that day. So anyone's welcome to show up. But we have the ability to provide daycare services to eight babies, six weeks to eighteen months old, and then ten toddlers, eighteen months to thirty-six months. So we're really excited about that and we've been pushing out the opportunity to our team members. And then after, I think it's December first, we'll go out to the general public to be able to reserve a spot if they would like to do so. Speaking of great things that are transpiring, besides a grocery store and an onsite daycare, we've got kids that are doing great things as well. We've had several of our teams make it into sectional play between swimming and football and cheer and soccer. Just a lot of great things that are transpiring and we're already ramping up and getting ready to start the winter season. In fact, Modified's already started the winter season. But I wanted to give a special shout out to Alexa Wolf, who is one of our students who has made it into state championship competition. And so we're so incredibly proud of her and what she has done and her determination. It's fierce determination when you see this kid. I mean, it's just fierce. And so tomorrow, Mr. Harrison has created an opportunity where all the students can give her a grand send off because she has to be in Rochester. So early Friday morning, we're going to do it tomorrow at the end of the day. So incredibly proud and wish for nothing but continued success. And then at the other end of the spectrum, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that all the great things that we have transpiring, we also have a lot of kids that are experiencing and demonstrating significant needs that they have as well, especially our youngest Rams. We see that they are really having some challenges managing their behavior and their behavior is then getting in the way of their learning. So we are partnering with some specialists from the University of Rochester to help us understand the function of the behavior so that the classroom environment, but also the instruction can be modified and adjusted to meet the needs of the behavior so that we can get to the academic needs. And, you know, it's definitely a different experience for many of our students, but many of our teachers as well. When you have behaviors that are interfering with not only that child learning, but then with others in the room learning as well. So know that we are, we are employing the help of others in hopes that we can make a different outcome for all involved. That takes time, right? It definitely takes time, but we, we realize the need and we're putting as many resources toward the need as we possibly can. And then the other piece I wanted to talk a little bit about is budget development. I sent out an email to the staff today and I copied all of you in on it just in regards to where we are and what our plan is to move forward at this point. I feel like right now we're in a little bit of a hiatus because we're waiting for the Rockefeller study to be released on December first. And the Rockefeller study is what the governor had commissioned. She wanted the Rockefeller Institute to study foundation aid and how schools are funded in New York. So we will know on or about December first, what the outcome of that study is. But she has also reserved the right to listen to it or not. She said that when she employed them to do it. So will it give us an insight as to what school funding will look like or not? Maybe, but it'll be interesting to see what the report does state. When I went to a meeting back in September and I actually had the opportunity to hear some of the individuals who are conducting the report, uh, share out the progress thus far. If I wasn't maybe being overly optimistic, it appeared and some of the things that they were saying is that they believe schools are underfunded. So this whole idea of money going to where there are no longer children because the enrollment has declined. Yes, that's true, but the needs and the, the cost of doing business has rose exponentially without those formulas being adjusted. So no, we're not really overfunded because there's fewer students. We're possibly underfunded because the cost of doing business and the needs of students has increased dramatically over time. The funding formula hasn't been looked at in years. And you need to be a rocket science to even understand it. So it'll be very interesting to see what is forthcoming. I also think it's very timely. And I don't think this is unintentional, that we have a regionalization survey that's being conducted at the same time that we have a foundation aid study that's being conducted at the same time that we have new graduation measures being introduced. So how these roads all meet will be very interesting, but I do think there will be some impacts for school districts. So that's why we're on a little bit of a hiatus with our own local budget development at this point. But the good news is, is, you know, we've, we've identified some pretty significant savings through attrition. But I'm just not sure that that's enough. So we'll continue to meet and be able to update you once we have a little bit more information. And then the last item that I have on my list to share with you is the conversation that we've been having about the paintings from Dana Lyons and just wanting to share with you that I've received other letters and emails from individuals regarding that. And one of the individuals who reached out to me via email wanted us to know that she thanked us for having the conversation and for even speaking about it. And she understands that nothing was done intentionally, so to speak, but she wanted to provide a solution. And the solution was to take the, the drawings, the paintings, so to speak, and then create replica portraits of them and then have the portraits hung, if that is something the board would want to consider. So I told her I would share that idea with you and here I am sharing that idea with you. So. I also explained to her, I thanked her for reaching out as well as the others. And I also said, it's that delicate balance, right, that we try to create. How do we continue to honor our past, but then recognize that the students that we serve today and tomorrow, that's not their past? So how do we create room for their memories and their legacy while we honor the past?
Thoughts from the board? Questions for Kelly from the board? I'd be interested in all like cost wise, as far as doing something like you just mentioned there.
Yep.
Just to get a feel or?
What that would look like. I can do that. Yeah. Reach out and get some quotes.
Will our students be able to do that?
Maybe. Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, could they recreate it? I mean, I don't.
Maybe. Yep, maybe. I could certainly speak to Mr. Harrison and then we could stop, uh, talk with the art department. It's all about, um, where does it fit and if it can fit, right? But yeah, maybe that's a possibility.
Okay. By the way, in case anyone was wondering, that YMCA room, the sidewalk that goes to nowhere right now in front of VW? That's gonna be a door eventually and.
It's gonna lead to everywhere, right? We're gonna get them at six weeks and then that, it's gonna just lead to everywhere. So. I think the door, I met with the team today. I think the door is supposed to be here by the end of next week. So hopefully it gets installed. I let them know those babies were coming January sixth, so that room needed to be done. So, right, Cameron? I think it was next week, right? That was it.
Okay. Jayla, anything you wanna share from the students?
She came prepared.
All right, good.
Very good. I've gotten very positive feedback from other students. If my science teacher has anything to go by, he's saying it's getting graded by middle schoolers, so it's gotta be something. The student council has been planning three events to be coming up on, like in December for the last three days until break. Uh, still in the making. The Halloween competition that the student council ended up doing went very smoothly and a lot of students loved the competition aspect of the pop-up dress up day. And the talent show that is coming up on December eighteenth is now gonna be open to seventh and eighth graders this year. So hopefully we can get more admissions and more diversity inside the singing like last year. That's mostly it for me, I think.
Perfect.
Questions from the board for Jayla?
Do you know what time that, it's gonna be in the evening on the eighteenth, right, December eighteenth? Okay.
Probably around five, nine, six.
All right, I just put a hole in my calendar. Perfect. Thank you. That would be great. Thank you.
What's the bus gas? What's the bus gas?
I will say she was very frightening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought I was scared too with that.
You should have seen her during spirit week. She, she brought it. So. That's right. And you did.
The city council said that they wanted to reach out to Mr. Love for the drum club to get a thank you comedic performance. So I might possibly be in it, but I'm not sure yet.
Good.
Did you yourself? Have you got, did you go to the Ram Mart?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got, um, a bag of bread.
Very good.
Got a bag of bread, um, the ghost juice I've been diluting with water.
I heard those were really good.
What else? Like, you got any? I got dark peanut butter.
Okay. There's a lot of yogurt right now. I like yogurt. There's a lot of yogurt. Yeah.
I heard the ghost was really good.
Yeah.
Very popular.
The delivery gentleman let us know this week that we had the largest delivery.
Good.
So, yeah, it's great. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's great. Yep. And that, no, I should just say too, you know, it's been a great partnership with the food bank, but we obviously need to look at other resources too to continue to support that. So we sent out several letters on Wednesday to our business partners and industry partners, just asking if anyone would like to support that initiative. So I'm sure that we'll be able to thank several people soon in the future. It is the season of giving and so we are looking forward to be receiving.
Message received, Donna.
Yes. Yeah, you probably have a letter coming to your office. So.
I just like hearing what the kids all pick up.
Yeah, it's, it's proud and impressive. Yeah, it's impressive. And I, I can go on one more thing about that. I, I would be remiss if I didn't give a significant shout out to Amy Bates, Adam Deeds and Courtney Owens. Their class has been instrumental in the operation of the Ram Mart. And then we've recently brought in Jen Hutches and several students that are gaining work experience or community service. So it has been truly a community, school-wide effort. Very thankful for all of them.
All right. Based on time, we'll save our sharing from the NISBA convention until after executive session. So going into Capitol Project Report, that was in your packets, any?
I'm having technology. Sorry.
Any questions from the board for Cameron on the report submitted? Cameron, anything you wanna add to it? Cameron, anything you wanna add to it regarding? Everything's still on schedule and budget's doing good? So I think it probably in December, we'll have to have discussion as a board on what, with the capitalized interest and the monies left over from that and where that's gonna be allocated. But I know you're waiting on some other items, right?
Yeah, we got some of that information today, so I'll include it in my update at the end of the week too.
Okay, any questions from the board on the reports submitted by the administrative team? I did just wanna talk real briefly um, in, in Brett, your report. Obviously, you're seeing a significant spike in suspensions, but it is good to know that we're looking to address that. I think if you look, there was twenty-five this past month when last year there was a total for the whole year of twenty-three. So it is something.
That was something of a plan to get out of here, I would feel, but.
Yep.
All hands on deck.
Okay. So glad you touched on that too, Kelly, because that was one just figure that kind of little stood out to me. I don't really do that. Any other thoughts or questions on those? Yeah, and really appreciate you guys putting those things together because it helps us really understand what's, you know, things are going on in day to day. So, thank you. Um, take a motion to approve the recommendations from the committee on special education? Motion by Mrs. Krasinski, second by Mr. Lavery. You wanna do this by?
Me on special ed?
Yes.
Who was the first?
Olivia.
Right.
And Fred. Yep.
I can put her vote in too.
And then we can. Assuming that was, okay, so Rainey?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, we're gonna do a little flashback here. Um, one of the reasons we're doing that. We had our ARP funding. That lasted three years. Twenty-three, twenty-four was our third year of that funding, so we wanna take a look back and see how we utilized that money. The area of focus on that had been our focus when we, when COVID started. Um, attendance, SEL, now health, student growth performance, you plan our critical skills. That's what we have put our money towards. It was extra staff and extra programs now. Um, if you remember going back in prom here probably, but um, nineteen twenty of moving our kind of closure, the hybrid schedule, and we slowly started progressing back to normal. When you look at our grade levels now, this year our seniors, their two years that were kind of really disruptive was their seventh and eighth grade years. When you look at this, I mean, you can kind of get out to here, we're gonna be here and do some true, right? Significant disruptions in their education along the way. Right now, we're seeing that sixth, seventh grade year. We got second, third grade instruction where that really, a lot of reading instruction, really key years and written up that all the years aren't key, but those second, third years, we're seeing a sixth and seventh grade, you know, struggling a little bit more than some of the other grades right now, but this is gonna happen, continue for a while. Uh, we look at attendings. Uh, we really do track the attendance, seems like um, kind of small. But what we're kind of seeing is overall, last year, most of the two years we had the pandemic, our numbers here are starting to come up a little bit, we're at ninety-two point eight-six. We're about almost about two percentage points lower than what we were before COVID. Um, I don't know if we can compare that much longer. It's one of those things where this might be already normal. Um, then we just kinda start and kind of continue from there. But each one of the grade levels, you can kind of go out to there and compare to that. We're also looking at the historical numbers, we're kind of taking, taking a fifteen-year average before COVID, just for anything that might have happened. And again, we're still just trying to turn two to three percentage points lower when you look at an average over fifteen years or. Um, but again, we got a lot of different things in place. We at least have a lot of programs in place. We're also looking at chronic absenteeism. That is an accountability measure right now according to the state. Um, that would be anybody who misses more than ten percent of the school year, which a hundred and eighty-day school year, that'd be eighteen or more absences. You can see where our numbers came down a little bit. Um, and BW from twenty-four point six down to nineteen point four is a nice jump. Eighteen point nine to seventeen point seven, another percentage point for high school there. So that those numbers are coming down a little bit. We are tracking that compared to our times rate, so. Uh, monitoring what's going on there. So some of the students are having those long-term absences, trying to get them back into the ability. Well, that was, that was one of that Mark Rectumall's division with yous here. Maybe we didn't longer cap that at this point. But our first area that we were kind of attacking. Um, just to give you a little idea of our student population, last year foster care, we had nine students who had been placed in a foster care home in our district, two were from our district, placed in a foster care home in our district. And twelve were our students placed outside of our district in a foster care environment. Um, we had not eight students passed through the carnival house for different lengths of time. Over the school year, we had ninety-seven students who were in some type of a homeless type environment for some length of time. Some maybe for the whole year, some for a couple of weeks, some for a couple of months. A little variety there. This year right now, at a point in time, I think within the September, we were at sixty at that one point in time already. Uh, homeschooling, last year we had seventy-eight students homeschooling, this year it's a little bit lower, so seventy-two. Economically disadvantaged, this number here actually drops by about seven percent, which is, which is good. Uh, we lost about a hundred, one hundred and thirty students or so less, they're economically disadvantaged environment. Students with disability, that number did creep up a little bit. But actually, the number of students went down and the percentage went up, students went down because our population went down. So it's just a, you know, they're saying that. Just to give you an idea of some of our student challenges. As Mike already mentioned, um, population's been kind of continually going down all over the years there. The transitivity thing, we look at each year a little bit. Last school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, from September fourth to June twenty-six, seventy-two, seventy-two students enrolled in our district, ninety-six exited, and then net loss of twenty-four. That's from September to June. Summer is just crazy. I've done, we didn't even, look at that, those two months. Just going from when school started to school ended that school year, that's quite a few students in and out of classrooms. First two months of this school year, September, October, we've already done, lost nineteen in that loss, so. So that means students coming in and out the doors. Now, obviously that has a big effect on when these students are constantly moving in different districts. Back down their education. I did this last year, I thought it'd drive one more year, see what happened. Um, last year, if you remember, we looked at transitivity just for a class. We tracked a group of students from kindergarten, they were in kindergarten, eleven, twelve, there's an extra zero in there, sorry. Ninety-eight students graduated in June. Three were here either early, had a schedule or late, so we take those three out. Um, six started kindergarten, they transferred out for a while and they came back and graduated. Thirteen transferred in, then grades one through five. And fifteen transferred in from grade six through twelve. So actually sixty-one students were here from K through twelve. About fifty-four percent, which is a little higher than last year. Last year it was about thirty-seven percent, I think. Um, there's still a lot of students sitting out. When you look at the total class, these are the numbers I just showed you. We also had eighty-five start in kindergarten, two thousand eleven, twelve, transferred out of Bass C S D. They just transferred some other district at that point, somewhere along the way between kindergarten and twelfth grade. We had fifty-six who did visit for a while, could have been a month, it could have been two months, it could have been a day, it could have been, who knows? Then they transferred out. Um, eight dropped somewhere along the way, you know, they started left, returned and dropped, or they transferred and dropped. There's so many different scenarios, it's just unbelievable these students are going through. But really, we could have actually had a potential two hundred forty-seven student graduating class. If anybody who showed up here actually stayed here for that time. Um, so it's just the numbers, students that are coming in and out of our class, just really something. Oops, sorry. The other areas, secondary, we're looking at social emotional learning. A lot of good things that we started during those three years, you know, still going on here, the panorama surveys, the different programs that we have, curriculums going on in the different buildings. Um, intentional, you know, the different student activities that the principals are, are facilitating and getting going. Um, the freshman advanced adventure-based learning, that teams are going on. It's a lot of things we've really kind of put in place and really starting to get to tier two and tier three interventions for our students. Um, wellness days are still a big hit. I think they're gonna happen again beyond those three years. BW last year did have their first wellness day. Um, that was really well received. Um, panorama survey mentioned. Obviously, we're looking at, you know, the staff has taken on a much more involved lead in the SEL enhanced curriculum. Um, Genie was kind of leading that along the way and then staff's kind of taking over to integrating that into their everyday work there. From the panorama surveys, from two thousand twenty-one to twenty-four, these four areas are four areas that high school's been focusing on, and you can see there's been improvements, positive improvements in those four areas among the students in the high school. Again, over those three years, there are different students going through, but it's definitely positive things happening there. In the middle school, same type of thing. We had some positive areas. They're looking at challenging feelings. Um, so that's been a positive increase there. They're having less challenging feelings. High school climate, uh, the feelings there as well. This point of growth, which has been mentioned a couple of times already, um, numbers are creeping up on us here a little bit. Uh, some of the things in DEW, they're starting to document a lot more, so some of those, the girl numbers are elevated a little bit. But you're starting to see some of those numbers, region areas that were back for pandemic. Student performance, we are looking at, continually looking at just all kinds of different multi data points all over the place. Um, a lot of increases there, but we're also looking at how that's fit with growth. It's not necessarily always performance, it's how our kids progressing. And we have observed that the third year, I would tell you, it's not as much of a jump in the growth area as we saw the first two years. So I'll just, students were a little bit behind and they made a big jump to catch up, but um, it was a little bit less. From twenty-one to twenty-four, basically you can kind of see across the board there, there's increases across there, some are bigger than others for a variety of reasons. But you can see where the numbers have been, and even in the right direction. Won't spend a lot of time, we can, we talked that all day. Um, math results, same type of thing, different grade levels, so you know, fifth grades, third class in twenty twenty-one to forty-one percent, fifteen, twenty twenty-four, fifty-one percent. You kind of just like, how you can read that. We compare our benchmarks, a lot of times your I-ready results are gonna be very similar to your New York State, E L A and math scores on their assessments there. Um, very similar. Sometimes they're similar, sometimes they're just completely different. You get something like this. An I-ready forty-seven percent, grade seventy-three on everyday math, so it's just two different assessments, so you wanna get them looking at different ways, then you gotta, gotta dive into that, see why was there a difference there. We're tracking my cohort, again, as they progress through the year, what are their numbers doing? Um, like these numbers here, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're not kind of what we see in the last couple of years there. But this is all stuff that teachers are looking at, two days working with teachers on. Uh, high school data, we saw that, that's kind of what I talked about since I won't spend a lot of time, but that graduation percentage has started to creep back up to eighty-five point eight. A little bit of a dip here in our advanced regions diploma results. And we're looking, like, kind of look at five-year averages too, because we know one class can kind of screw your numbers a little bit, so kind of track them as well. We also, we're just trying to kind of look at C T E program enrollments, we know that's kind of been growing. Um, a participant would be a student who was in their first year of a vocational program, but a concentrator would be in their second year of a program. Um, you can kind of see, we kind of peaked here at twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a hundred and seven last year, students that were attending BOCs. When you look at that participant number, probably a few juniors and maybe a senior who changed a vocational program. But when you look at a senior class of maybe a hundred kids, sixty going to BOCs, it makes you wonder what Mr. Harrison's doing all day. Putting all the bus and waving. But that's a pretty high percentage of our, our students who are going to vocational programs, which is outstanding. It's great we can offer those things. Um, can also look at it a little bit more, how many of those kids are concentrators in year two? And then they're taking their, you know, skills-based assessment. There wasn't, the assessments weren't given in twenty twenty-one, but you know, last year you see forty-seven, those students thirty-two pass, sixty-one, sixty-eight point one percent success rate there for those kids taking those programs. Like for, how's career civic readiness? They give us a student a score based on what diploma they, then they figure out their, their civic or college career ready. Uh, our number dropped a little bit. This is something that's probably gonna get changed completely with the whole graduation requirements change. The fourth area, there are the critical skills. Um, you know, we're still looking at that, how, you know, the administrative team just spent a day there last week, they're looking at observation data, how do we get students to a more engaged level where they can actually really kind of get involved with these critical skills and learn to develop these critical skills. And the biggest thing with that is teachers had to do less in the classroom. Sometimes the teachers feel they gotta really guide and do everything, but they can move into that facilitator role. It puts more of the learning on the students and they can start to develop some of those skills that we're looking for. Um, we also got some new pathways for graduation coming out that really kind of supports your graduates, kind of align right to some of our critical skills. And if they come out with ways to evaluate that, that's just gonna make our work a lot easier. So continuation, you know, what's still happening this year, which is now actually ARP money's disappeared. Um, obviously, there's a ton of work, like I said, that student engagement connections, trying to work on that attendance piece, always kind of make that better, critical skill development. SEL committees are active, they're gonna continue with the panorama surveys. Curriculums, do they do a ton of work on that, you know, with SEL and trying to always continually hold SEL into the curriculum work, so it's just kind of integrated. It's not, put your books aside, we're gonna do SEL now type thing. Genie's, we took uh, Genie Wheeler's schedule and she's kind of shifted in some of that integration specialist stuff. These fellows so important for to keep some of that role that we're able to fund some of that through some of our title grants, so she's still taking on some of those responsibilities. Tuesday started a bunch of work around training and curriculum work for the science of reading, was kind of advancing our students in that. And, you know, let them look more grade level content focus in different areas. As remediation intervention, it's gonna be more specific, more tiered towards tier two and three targeted, which allows for more of that grade level content now. We had three years where we're kind of playing catch-up. I can't say we're all caught up, but we're, we're maybe moving in that direction, things are going well. And then obviously, this has been talked about already, we had also identified that, you know, our PBIS teams involve DEW and Dana Lyon that can have an impact on positive student behavior during school day. Working with University Albany, and then we talked about the University Rochester work and what's going on there in DEW with those those folks. But again, bottom line is, we're not done. I mean, it's just gonna keep going. The funding might have ended at the end of last year. But now we're finding ways through closely, you know, BOCs posters or through title grants, where we can continue some of this work that we see them for. That kind of wraps up the ARP funding. Any questions? I'll send it to Donnie, you can look at it a little closer when you have time to do that.
That was a lot, yeah.
And we could have been here for an hour.
Any immediate questions for Mr. Krasinski though? That's really good stuff, and so. Thank you. Okay, take a motion to approve the business consent agenda. By Mrs. Cleveland, second by Mr. Lavery. Any questions here on that one?
Motion passes seven zero.
Alright, in your packets was the report from our internal auditor. Um, looks like they tested a lot of different categories in there. Uh, from what I saw, everything was low, low risk and improvement on previous years, so that's great job to, to everybody. Um, take a motion to approve that risk report from Mr. Ward, second by Rusek. Any other questions on that? Again, that's done through T S T BOCs, they've spent that same format for the last few years, so it's really great to see that improvement.
Motion passes seven zero.
So in your packets were some proposals for new uh, classes in the high school. Um, descriptions are in there. You know, anything, any questions on any of those for the high school staff? I had to really, I wasn't sure what advanced real.
But now. Yeah, yeah. Great opportunities for kids.
Alright, take a motion then to approve those. By Mrs. McKinley, second by Mrs. Krasinski. Any further questions? Vote is up. Vote is up.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. And then the last business item in the, in your packets was a. Nice offer for the administrat- the administrators group to create a new scholarship to be given out at the end of the school year. I certainly really appreciate that, you guys willing to do that. Um, so take a motion to approve that new scholarship. On behalf of the school administrators. Uh, by Mr. Laverty. And the second by Mrs. Rusek. The vote is up for Lance.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, um, take a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. That includes the additions that were noted earlier by Mr. Ward. Second by Mrs. Cleveland. Any questions? Doesn't.
Motion passes seven zero.
Yeah, there is one request for an instructional resignation, and that is from Etta Wilson, who is a teaching assistant, and this would be effective November twenty-eighth. Take a motion to approve that request. And this is Rusek, second by Mrs. Cleveland.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we have a few non-instructional probationary appointment requests, if there's no objection. Like, we can do this as a consent and just read the names. Okay? So ask for a motion to approve the probationary appointments of Jean Clock as a teacher aide, Heather Saff as a teacher aide. Kelly Ferguson as a teacher aide, and Jacob Hernandez as an assistant cook.
They actually need to take Kelly Ferguson off.
Changed her mind.
Okay, so everyone but we'll eliminate Kelly, she's taken off the list. We had it. There was a motion in the second, right? Did you get that? No, not yet. Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I want to make that motion by Mr. Ward, second by Mr. Laverty, sorry about that.
And I was just waiting to hear the name.
And just to. Clarify, these are all because of resignations that we're filling, there's.
Correct.
Positions.
Yeah, they're not new. Wow. These. No, but they're, like you were asking, if they were just going to fill a vacancy that we had created by somebody that resigned. All but one, we have a student that, um. Had some needs that we needed to adjust staffing for, so.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, so some recommendations for permanent appointments. We're fine doing consensus on that. So take a motion to approve permanent appointment of Emily, Emily Hobbs is a typist, that'd be effective December sixteenth. Ariana Skinner is a teacher aide, effective November fourth, Rebecca Van Sickle, food service helper. That would be effective December first, and Rhonda Grant. As a food service helper, and that would be effective December first as well. Motion. By Mrs. Krzynski, second by Mrs. McKinley.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, there is one request for, as a non-instructional resignation. So I'd take a motion to approve, um, non-instructional resignation of Christine Cullen as a teacher aide, that would be effective. November fifteenth. Motion by Mrs. Cleveland, second by Mrs. Rusek. Vote's coming up.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, and the last personal item is request for a permanent appointment extension, so ask for a motion to approve. The extension of Elizabeth Brewer, um, to February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do some unpaid days. That were granted. Make motion, I'm Miss Krzynski. Second by Mrs. Kin- sorry. Keep a point. All right.
Motion passes seven zero.
We get all the personnel ends. All right. Um, we will need to go into an executive session to discuss contractual matter that we have. Going on with the town of Bath. Um, but there won't be any action to be taken after that. But. Any public comments, questions, Mr. Palm?
First of all, now sitting in the office, we're just sitting in front of the back, so I go back. Back to, uh, the superintendent and the chapter study. With the monitors on the bus. Right now, you know, he was taking him out. But you still only have one monitor, so if there's more students on the bus, if they go through it, there's going to be another monitor. Just be one monitor of the bus, no matter how many students.
That's the intent at this moment, I mean, I guess situations could change, right, and we would adjust accordingly, but. Yeah.
Okay.
We already have one more than most districts have. We already have one more than most districts have. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought the bus drivers, to me back in the day, they were over, the bus driver, the monitor.
Mom and dad and babysitter and yes.
Okay. Still, I'm not with the superintendent this morning, but yeah, in regards to the two paintings that were done. By, uh, Dora Haley and Albonza, were both Arling students and both were war two veterans. Uh, she after speaking with the superintendent this morning. We both know that. They have been destroyed. That's the other year of it. But several inquiries regarding the paintings, we have. They have employees. Working in our district that have no, they aren't from that, but I'm not saying that's not a bad thing, but when they come across things that might be historic. You know, that should be brought to the superintendent's attention, or as I put down here. Uh. I'd like to see the board. Report to them before destroying or destroying it. And I don't know if there's anything left. That's historical, I mean, you know, there's paintings. Like these up here, I don't know, I wouldn't call those historical, I mean, whoever painted them, it's probably a really great book. But the ones back from the thirties. More so. Historical for the men that painted them. In their time period. So going forward, I can see the board, you know. They had those items seen before they destroyed them, and this may not help them, this may help. In not having this happen again, in the bishop or something. That I thought was very historical. And, uh. Getting to the point, the part there where you said there's somebody, you know, hanging on that. I have a picture of both the paintings. And Mr. Haley's already in our, uh, hall of distinction or wall of distinction, whatever it is, I'll say it. Mr. Vonzer. I know, probably no one's nominated him yet, but. If. He was in that hall of distinction or wall of distinctions. We had Mr. Haley on one side. Mr. Vonzer on the other side, and then had the, he liked that or whatever picture it is, of the two paintings. Put in between them. You know, as some kind of representation of. What they did, I mean, I do have to go through. And all boils down to a countervailing. That'd be kind of both things that happen. All that, I did have much stuff written, but she covered most of it, uh. I guess that's all I got.
Well, thank you. No, I mean, I.
And she's right, where we can't keep everything, but. My fifth year vice reunion, the flag. And we can't like going into the gym and seeing the record, except there's anyone up in the track or the pool. And I do believe that the track there was a gentleman there from nineteen seventy-two, there's still also a record. It hasn't been broken by the school. So I mean, you know, it goes back seventy-two, but twenty more years, everybody breaks their record, and that's twenty more years for him, you know. But, so we do have some things that, you know, the children today or the students today can. Look back on it, they've come back in twenty years or twenty-five years, I know, this is a football record, it's probably somewhere.
It's going to be displayed soon.
But. But, just like you say, the stuff. Doesn't mean the lack of students today, but. Those old people that are still kicking around, you know, so. I mean, a lot.
I agree, I would. Trust that our staff isn't going around destroying things, but, but I think.
Like I say, it's something against the people, but it's, they go. You know, these are the big items, you had to use the fork to get rid of them.
Yep.
You know, and, uh. We just open them up and go, hey, what's this, and, you know, it's the superintendent or whoever, and just said, well, where do these, where do they come from? And then, oh my God, that's what we took out back in two thousand. Three or five, I can't remember, right around there, and, you know, preserve them, have somebody come and crate them up. We just didn't have them laying around for. Out there, I know they probably were cumbersome in the way, but. Someone should have looked and said, hey, what is this? Didn't mean anything to them, I mean. They're by the wayside. That's all, you know.
No, I. There is certainly a desire to preserve history and as much as possible, but not.
Actually, I know that, I was about to support your question.
Sure you don't have any?
And I have that picture, if you're able to see it.
I think you.
I have it, yeah.
I think we were. Mrs. Howke has a copy that was emailed to her as well. Yeah.
Yeah, both of them. Yep, both of them.
Yep.
Yep.
I just think that picture with Mr. Haley on the side, Mr. Vonzer.
So I think there certainly is this option to, to do something like you mentioned.
So I know some of the candidates graduated from here, and then I see some of their artwork displayed in the San Antonio. That would be great, they don't necessarily have to be. The size. So I'll get that picture.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anything? Anything else for tonight?
Well, thank you.
Okay.
For being.
Well, we do have, yes, I appreciate the. You guys attending, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Take a motion then to go into executive session for the contractual discussions. Mr. Larry, Mr. Ward, again, no action will be taken after. All in favor? Zero, thank you all again for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.